It's 6:00 PM. It's time to reconvene the meeting of the Sampson County Board of Commissioners for December 5th. At this time, I will turn the meeting over to Vice Chair Kivitt for our invocation and pledge.
At this time, I'll ask Ms. Holder, she would give us the invocation.
Sure. Would you pray with me, please? Lord, as we gather here in this season of Advent, we are so thankful for the birth of your Son, Jesus Christ, and the salvation he bought us. In this Advent season, we humbly ask that you bless us with hope, knowing that you walk with us in the most challenging of times. We ask that you bless us with peace, open our hearts and clear our minds, and give us wisdom and discernment so that our actions will always be in accordance with your will. Lord, we ask that especially in this season, that you give us the ability to be one in spirit, united in the common purpose to show love for our fellow man, reflecting the servant leadership of your Son. And dear Lord, we ask you to give us joy in doing your will, and knowing that we all have many, many plans, but in the end, it is your plans that will prevail. As in all days, Lord, we give you thanks. Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Holder. Please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
And looking at the agenda, we have one item that we're going to walk on, on the consent agenda, approving the sheriff's bond. That would be item T on the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda as amended?
I make a motion to accept the agenda as amended.
I second. All in favor? Show unanimous. Okay, I will now turn it over to Mr. Causey.
Madam Chair, as is customary with the board, every December, we elect a new chairperson. And it's customary for the county manager to conduct that election. And what I will do is ask for nominations for the chair. And if there's more than one, then we will vote in the order of nomination. And if anything else has to be done after that, we will work it out as we go. And then the chair, the new chair will then take care of electing the vice chair. So with that, I am opening the floor for nominations for Chair of the Sampson County Board of Commissioners.
I nominate Vice Chair Gerald Kivitt for chair.
Are there other nominations? If not, could I see a show of hands of people supporting Mr. Kivitt for Chairman of the Sampson County Board of Commissioners? Congratulations, Mr. Kivitt.
Thank you. I certainly am honored to have this been selected as chair, and I certainly will give it my utmost and do everything I can. I have tremendous love for this county and will continue to work hard. At this time, I'm going to open nominations for vice chair, and I nominate Commissioner Sue Lee. Any other nominations? Hearing none. All in favor of Commissioner Sue Lee for vice chair? Raise your hand. Is this unanimous? Congratulations. I'll give you an opportunity. You said you wanted to...
I have a few words to say. I wanted to just tell everyone what an honor it has been to serve as the chair for Sampson County Board of Commissioners the past year. First female ever, but that's really not that important. I'm just thankful for the honor. And I'd like to give a huge thank you to our employees, to our department heads, to our administrative staff. Y'all have been so supportive, and you've been willing to provide guidance as requested or needed. And as we all know, there have been significant employee shortages through the year, and it continues to be systemic. However, adjustments were made, schedules were changed, and whatever it took was done to continue services to our citizens, and I owe them a huge debt of gratitude. Our commissioner board has been amazing. In my opinion, there's no one seat on this board that is more important than the other. And all five of the commissioners have worked together on whatever issue was at hand to produce the best possible outcome for Sampson County, regardless of the hand that we were dealt. And let me assure you, there are hard workers on this board. And from the bottom of my heart, I would like to thank you for all the hard work, support, commitment, and love for this county and its citizens. We work as a team, and I thank you all for the help that you've given me this past year. Chairman Kivitt will take the reins and continue the work that we have been doing without skipping a beat with my full support. And I do have a couple pieces of advice for him. Number one, pray often. Number two, no one likes long meetings, so keep it rolling. Thank you, y'all.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I'd like to say this, that working with Sue has been a pleasure, and no one has worked any harder at this position than she has. We have faced some unprecedented times, as we all have. And in government, it's even more complicated in handling those things. And we've been dealt some hard cards, and we played very well, worked hard on it, and your leadership has been instrumental, so thank you.
Thank you so much.
At this time, I'm going to call on Myron Cashwell to come forward and bring his planning and zoning information, and I'll open a public hearing.
Thank you, sir. Our first order of business is the R-22-08 Williams rezoning. This is a request to rezone the 2.88 acre parcel from commercial to residential. The planning board met and looked at the rezoner request and voted unanimously to approve it. Any other questions?
I don't have any. Does anyone on the board have any questions concerning this? Okay, I'll close the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion concerning this R-22-08.
I move that we adopt the enclosed resolution approving R-22-08, having found the proposed zoning, rezoning consistent with Sampson County land use plan.
Okay, is there a second? Got a second? All in favor? Raise your right hand. Unanimous. Thank you very much. I'll open another public hearing for ZTA 22-02. Mr. Cashwell?
Mr. Chair, I'll be addressing that specific item. Earlier this year, the North Carolina Department of Public Safety, who oversees the flood hazard prevention ordinances and flood damage mitigation programs for the state of North Carolina, conducted a site visit here in Sampson County to review our files. As part of that site visit, they did a review of our flood damage prevention ordinance. And there were a few, as you can see, minor changes that they recommended that we make to the language of the ordinance. You have those there. It's summarized in pages seven and eight of your agenda materials. These are, again, minor things like adding a few provisions to the statutory authorization section, deleting a sentence about LOMERs, in Article 3, Section B, some square footage changes, and things of that nature.
Does anyone have any questions at this time? Hearing none. I'll close the public hearing. I move we approve the amendments for the flood damage prevention ordinance as recommended. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. All in favor? Raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. At this time, I'll call on Mr. Causey.
Mr. Chairman, this will be, I'll be on the agenda several times tonight, but this will be the only time that I will speak from down here in case there are a number of questions or discussions we might have. Mrs. Holder has passed out to you a memo that we had prepared to make sure that we have clarity for everyone that might consider it. And this is an update on efforts regarding employee recruitment and compensation challenges. At the November Board of Commissioners meeting, you authorized procurement of a comprehensive market study to be performed as soon as possible, with recommendations to be fully implemented within budgetary restrictions. This process is underway with the expectation that the completed market study will be available by early summer. You also directed staff to immediately research and implement operational changes which would enhance our competitiveness when recruiting new employees and improve the retention of existing employees. The circumstance regarding vacancies continues to exacerbate the challenges in several departments. In addition, and as you know, inflation and supply chain issues continue to affect all employees. Recognizing that the market study will not be available until later in 2023, and that we will continue reviewing our circumstances with personnel during the budget process, we offer the following first steps in addressing our employment challenges. Number one, recruitment. Beginning 1/1/2023 and continuing through 6/30/2023, provide a $2,004 hiring bonus to be paid monthly for identified hard-to-fill positions. And these are social worker, protective services, child and adult, nurse, physician extender, EMT paramedic, detention officer 1, 2, and 3, deputy 1, 2, and 3, telecommunicator, and senior planner. Estimated costs on the current vacancies would be, filling the vacancies would be $90,000 and $180,000 for the bonuses. Number two, retention. Implement a 2.5% pay raise for all full-time and part-time staff effective 1/1/23 and reflected in the 2/15/2023 payroll. And a caution, this is a raise and not a cola. The projected cost of this would be $375,000, including fringe benefits for the full-time, $12,500 for the part-time, $15,000 for budgeted overtime. We want to emphasize that these are the first steps in dealing with employee compensation, and we expect to be making additional recommendations as the market study and budget are completed. While I am talking, Mr. Chair, based on some conversation earlier today, we thought it might be helpful if we just review momentarily a couple of things that have occurred in the last year. If you recall, in July of 2021, we approved with the budget a 5% pay raise for all employees. In addition to that, at that same time, there was also a bump in moving people along the pay scale, and I think that amount, David, was in the range of about $500,000.
Yes, sir.
In December, you approved a 2.1% bonus for all employees that were working, I think, as of June 30th. And then in January, we approved a 5% pay increase. I think the only thing that I have left out of that was there was an additional 5% increase that was given to the detention center employees. One of the other questions that has come up during the last week that I think may be helpful is talking about the retirement system and specifically the 401 system. At this point, at this time, all employees of the sheriff's department receive a 5% contribution to their 401. All other employees receive a 1.5% contribution to their 401, with the added inducement that if they contribute an additional 3.5%, David, it will be matched by 3.5%. At the time that was done in 2015, we were limiting health insurance for people that started to work sometime after 2015 or at the completion of the pay study, I think. And we also brought to an end the people that could get longevity. And the idea was to create this 401, to create an incentive for people to be able to have the opportunity to make up a great deal of that difference between the time they came to work and the time that they retired, if they so chose. Questions or comments?
Does anyone have any questions this time? Okay. Do we have a motion to direct the staff to issue the RFP rather than to move forward with these compensation challenges?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, it's passed. All right. Mr. Causey, are you next for the...
Yes, sir.
...discussion on the revaluation?
Yes, sir. I will do that. And we also have Jim Johnson here. If there's additional questions, we can, we can. At the present time, we are doing revaluation every eight years, okay? And as you can see on the sheet that is attached, the North Carolina Department of Revenue recommends that we do that on a much shorter period. I don't know that that is a specific issue for us to address tonight. However, in the correspondence they sent us in the spring, they pointed out that our evaluations were such that we were getting out of kilter and that we were below 90%, which means it was at 18%. And they have suggested that we go ahead and do another property evaluation. And I think what the staff is recommending that we do, not necessarily to approve a change in the valuation at this point in time, but to authorize us to go out and do an RFP for potential appraisal service to see the various types that we could get and the timeframes. And when that information is brought back to you, Mr. McClam, you then can choose whether to go forward with it or to change the appraisal, the revaluation period, or whatever.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions? All right. I move we direct the staff to issue the RFP for potential appraisal services.
Second.
All in favor? It's unanimous. All right, that takes care of item three, so we'll go to four. Mr. Causey, you're up again.
Yes, sir. This is the appointment of the clerk to the board. This is, this is, this is one of these items that creates great excitement and great sadness at the same time, because on the one hand, we have a clerk who has got many years of experience that is retiring, who has been of tremendous value to everybody. But at the same time, we're also excited that we got a lady somewhere in this room by the name of Stephanie Shannon, who has been working with us for several years and has already completed the training for the clerk with the, with our state people. And so with that, we are recommending that Ms. Stephanie be appointed as the clerk to the board with her swearing in to occur in January when we convene.
That would be effective January 1st.
Yeah. That was quick.
I'm here for a few more days.
All right. Have a motion.
I move to appoint Ms. Shannon to the board.
All right. You've got a second. Okay, all in favor? Raise your right hand. Unanimous. Congratulations. Stephanie, it's, we'll be here for you. I hope you are for us.
We're going to be here worrying you.
Yeah. Well, not to give up, but, Mr. Causey, you're up again.
I hope this is near the end of what I will be doing, because I am quickly running out of information to offer, so if there's anything else, I may be ill-prepared. The good news is we're excited about our new emergency services building. It's going to be, it's nearly finished, and with all of the mechanical issues and technological issues that we got, we hope that sometime in the spring that we will have them fully relocated over there. I think part of the staff may move in January, with the rest of the staff to be moving several months thereafter. In any circumstance, over time, we have been talking about the existing facilities and what should happen. And I think it has been the general discussion that the county, from a standpoint of many reasons, would do well to divest itself of the existing building from a standpoint of maintenance and repairs. And so what we're asking you to do, we're asking you to consider is, do you want us to take the opportunity to solicit officer offers on the building to see what the opportunities are for disposition and to, and to bring that back to the board sometime in the spring? And I would share for you as a clarification, I don't know that we would want to start on that till sometime after the first year, Mr. Sauer, when we were pretty well determined on when we were going to have the entire facility relocated. I would hate to. So we leave it for the board's comments or suggestions.
All right. Anyone have any further comments?
I think it would be wise to wait till they move out, you make that decision.
I think so, but do we want to adopt a resolution directing the staff to informally solicit offers ahead of time?
Well, that could be too, at the same time. With that date, yes.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Raise your right hand. All right. We're going to give you a break, Mr. Causey. Mr. Black, it's your turn.
Yes. We recently sent out a request for qualifications for architectural services for the animal shelter to, for an extension and upgrade to those facilities. The five members of the evaluation team looked over all of the proposals that were sent in and evaluated the each one and have come up with a recommendation for DWG Architects and Shelter Planner.
Okay. Anyone have any questions concerning this? Do we have any further background? We came up with this, you have a committee that's come up with this and recommends hiring this group?
Yes, there's basically five members that are, are five positions that always sit on this committee. I'm one of those positions, but I designated mine to Ms. Holder since she had worked more closely with the animal shelter facilities when they, when these last ones were originally built, was more familiar with animal shelter. But we did have, Mr. Causey was on it, Lynn Reynolds was on it, and the Animal Shelter Department Head, Anna Ellis, was on the committee also. And basically, all we were doing was looking at the architects who provided a response to our request for qualifications to try to determine the best qualified firm to handle it.
Do we know what the cost would be for the architectural fees?
Not as of yet. That's not one of the questions we get to ask.
That's the beauty of state law, is that you are not allowed to consider price other than unit price when you're selecting design firms, engineering firms, architecture firms, things like this. You have to rank them and select them based off their qualifications, and then negotiate the contract with them. Now, if you are not able to negotiate a contract within your budget for the project, you can then begin negotiating with the next firm. That's the fail side.
But we do have a little oversight.
We do have some oversight, but our hands are tied by state statute to the extent to which we can consider price for an architectural contract.
We have the privilege of paying, right?
Correct.
For the most part, you're right.
Mr. Chair, I might offer two things. Number one, this group did a particularly good job of defining the expectations of what we hope to accomplish, and we believe at the end of the day, that will, that will be some savings as indicated by the architect. Now, then again, savings is kind of a term everybody could determine. We'll also suggest to you, all of the firms were certainly qualified. DWG is an architectural firm that basically specializes in these kinds of facilities. In fact, they are the current architect of record that is helping Duplin County with their facility. I think they recently completed the facility in Pitt County, and so they are, and we're hoping as he continues to monitor that construction, that will give us some increased cost savings from a travel standpoint as we develop this.
I got you. Well, I will say that Animal Shelter has done a great job, and they continue to do so, and so we'll entertain a motion for this.
I move that we select DWG Architects as the best qualified firm and authorize the county manager to negotiate the contract for architectural services.
Second.
All in favor? Raise your right hand. Unanimous? All right, thank you. Let's see, Ms. Holder, I think you've got some roads to name. So I open a public hearing?
Yes, sir. There are actually two items I want to bring to you tonight. On behalf, the first of which, on behalf of the road naming committee, we have received recommendations with regards to the naming of a private road, Private Road PVT 1742-2113. The committee has met and recommends to you the name Meadow Run Lane.
Okay. Do we have any comments on that? Anyone got any questions? So we've closed the public hearing.
Yes, sir. And there's one other item with regards to road naming we want to bring to your attention. You'll hear about this in the coming months, probably quite a, quite a bill, a big deal. The construction of Highway 24 resulted in a lot of sections of the road being rerouted. You've seen it, I'm sure. It made sure, it segmented certain segments of the highway from other segments. It created new road segments. So in other words, there are a lot of roads now that don't meet our 911 ordinance standards, and these are going to have to be renamed, much to our chagrin. Because of the, because of the work that will, this will entail, the road naming, addressing staff and the committee has met several times to review, because we want to find the least impactful to the citizens opportunities that we can find. So we've looked at several proposals for readdressing the affected sections, and let's see, there are nine sections of road and approximately 175 households that the road name will have to be altered somewhat, and probably new numbers. Our idea is we want to make sure there is prompt emergency response, and that's why you need your addressing systems to be intact. The committee has, does appreciate the impact this is going to have to our citizens. Therefore, we are endeavoring to keep the public notified. Our 911 addressing staff, and I do want to point them out, Rick Sauer, our emergency services director, but the young woman who has done the yeoman's work on this is Ms. Jessie Matthews. Jessie, you might want to stand up, because she's going to be the person who will bring your road naming recommendations to you, probably from this point on, and she has done the yeoman's share of work on this. And will be bringing to you a proposal in future meetings. You'll have to have a public hearing, just like you do now, and they have endeavored to already have conversations with the municipalities that these roads touch. We don't want them to be caught unaware either, and we're going to recommend to you that there be some public meetings for those people who are being impacted, so they will appreciate and understand what's being done. But we wanted you to hear about it first, before it got out into the public.
Thank you for your help. Thank you very much. Okay, so I move that we name the private road as recommended. I have a second.
Second.
All in favor? Raise your right hand. Unanimous? Okay. I'm going to turn it over to Vice Chair Lee at this time.
I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge one of our favorite volunteers for the county, Mitzi, our mascot and ambassador for the Sampson County Animal Shelter that has served us so well for many years, passed away today. And I think she would have to be one of the most favorite, and I know the whole shelter's going to miss her, and we're going to have to get another replacement at some point, but not tonight, but just think about poor Mitzi. Okay, at this time, I'm going to take these by department. For the Sampson County Regional Medical Center, I move that we reappoint Andy Darden, Craig Richardson, and Telfair Simpson. And same motion, I'd like to appoint Nelson Powell and Wendy Bechtin to this board. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, for the Sampson County Public Library Board, I move that we reappoint Natalie Smith and appoint Debbie Dottry. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Shows unanimous. Okay, to the Sampson County Health Department Advisory Board, I move that we reappoint Anna Rae McCullen, Cynthia Davis, Yara Hernandez, and appoint Daniel Combo and Russell Devan. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
All in favor? Shows unanimous. Okay, for the Fire Commission, I move that we appoint Chairman Gerald Kivitt. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, for the Local Emergency Planning Committee, I move that we appoint First Sergeant J.E. Stahl with North Carolina State Highway Patrol. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Shows unanimous.
We may need to inquire with the attorney. I think you actually have to formally appoint all of those Fire Commission members.
All the members of the Fire Commission.
All of them, okay. Okay. Well, I move that we appoint the current standing members of the boards. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, we got lots of jobs there. I'm glad I didn't have to call on those.
All right. I think we announced it as consent agenda. Any questions on that? All right. We have a motion to approve.
I move that we accept the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
Second. All in favor? All right. Mr. Causey, we're back to you again.
Did you have? Am I before the tax appeals?
No, this is the tax appeals. I think that's.
You're doing the tax.
You're listed as the tax.
That's the information I have.
Okay. Basically, you have got the tax appeals are in your packet and this is coming back from when we started doing the business audits. And I think it was agreed at that time in the initial years that on those, the board would consider returning up to fifty percent of the interest penalty back to the individual.
Correct. All right. So they have a motion that we approve the waiver of half the penalty?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Raise your right hand. Unanimous? Okay. Next, we have. Okay. And we have some board information. Has anyone got any questions on any of that? Having none, we're gonna go to the county manager's report.
Mr. Chairman, I have two things. Going back to your board information, you've got up there that there's a recommendation of alternatives to the Ivanhoe Project. And I think we've worked out that the engineers will be here with us in January to give you a description to make sure that we've answered all other questions regarding that. The other thing that I would like to take a moment to and talk about, I think I would be remiss if I did not talk about Ms. Susan Holder and her thirty-plus years of work to the county. Mr. Godwin, she is special in that not only has she been the assistant county supervisor, says county manager, going back to my USDA days, she's also been the public information officer and clerk to the board. So at this point in time, we're beginning to break up some of those duties. And I can tell you that she has done a very good job. I have been here thirteen years and she has been here this entire time. And one of the terms we use for Mrs. Holder is the fact that she is a wordsmith. And we use that with the highest amount of compliments because there's very few products that we can write that Mrs. Holder cannot put her little flair on to make it a little bit better. And so that is quite a talent that will be sorely missed. I think we would be remiss to not mention the fact that she's got a level of institutional knowledge. If I worked here for the next twenty-five years, I don't think that I would have the institutional knowledge that she does. But to go back even a step further, my first active experience with USDA, Mr. Godwin, Mr. McClam, were working with Ms. Holder and Mr. Clark goes back to 1998 or 1999. And I believe the first project that we did was about $2 million for courthouse improvements. And that worked out so well that over the next ten years, we loaned the county an additional $100 million, which sometimes we talk about now, Mr. McClam, as to whether that was a good thing or not. But the one thing that was determined during that period of time was the efficiency of both Ms. Holder, along with the rest of the county, and Mr. Clark. They were so good at what they did. I will tell you that when I was approached about applying for the job, my first call was to Mrs. Holder to see if she had any interest because I thought she was so good at what she did. If she had any interest whatsoever in the job, I would never even have considered applying. But she assured me that she had no plans to apply, and so therefore I did. Things, working with Ms. Holder, it was interesting. Once I got to the point that I could get her to express herself, we then developed into the circumstance when we had very robust conversations then and now. So, so she has been quite the spirited person and she has got a dedication to the county and the things that we do that is equal to anybody that I have observed. And it is my hope that she enjoys her retirement as well as I've enjoyed having her working with us, or working with me for the last thirteen years.
That's good. I don't know why she had to retire when I became chair. That's what I don't understand. But Stephanie will do a good job. I understand she has your phone number.
Yes, sir, she does.
All right. Thank you. We'll go now to the public comment section. We have three people signed, four people signed up. Mr. Best? Susan, before Mr. Best starts, do you want to read our policy?
Sure. I will briefly recap it, if you don't mind, sir. By law, the board entertains a period of public comment at the end of each regular scheduled monthly meeting. We allow, this board has opted to allow three minutes for comments, each person. The light will glow green when you start. After you've expended two minutes and have a minute remaining, it will turn yellow. It will turn red at the end of your three minutes. And the board asks that you quickly complete your comments promptly and leave the lectern. You cannot yield your time to any other speaker. The board is, the speakers are asked to give their name and address before they speak. The topics of the public comments cannot be anything that would be privileged or personnel-related. This is a period of time in which the board listens. They do not necessarily respond to questions. It's an information gathering period.
Thank you. Mr. Best, you can proceed now.
Okay. My name is Glenn Best. I live at 2699 Peterson Road. I've been living on the road about twenty-four years. In the past year and a half or two years, my understanding is that the county has hired somebody to pick up the trash and carry the trash off our road. My road looks like the city dump. We got couches, we got chairs, we got hog heads down there. We got mattresses that have been down there since the first of May. The people who mow that road, they mow the bags of trash, they do not move anything. And if we're paying this money to people in Stanford, which I was told by the DOT, then I think we're wasting our money and the county needs to know it and do something about it. My personal opinion is I think we should get somebody locally that will do a certain amount of roads and pay them to do it and keep it up. As it is, it's a trash dump. I hate living on a trash dump road. And I don't think anybody in this building would. And that's what I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Best. We appreciate it. Okay. At this time, we have Natalie Flores.
Good evening.
State your name and your address, please.
My name is Natalie Flores and I live on 136 Russell Street, Clinton. Well, I just have a complaint, that's it, basically, just to let you know and be aware of. There's a sweet potato plant right beside my house and it's infesting in our homes, in my neighbors' homes with those gnats really bad. We have complained to the city already and we went to the meetings as well. They say they was gonna spray and fix that problem. This is going on two years now. And I have kids. It's disgusting. And like, I don't know where to turn to. I don't even know where to get information about any of that stuff, or the plant, or whatever they have. Because they were on 24, on Old Warsaw Road. But I don't understand why they moved to our little street, basically. It's Farm Fresh. I think that's the company name. But we have complained, and I got some of my other neighbors here too, that they wanna complain and show the evidence too that how bad they are. I mean, it's ridiculous that we have to spend our money just to do their job and they're not doing their job properly.
Okay.
That's all I have to really say.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
All right. Thank you.
Denise Fason? You're next.
Good afternoon. My name is Denise Fason, 159 Russell Street. Piggybacking on what she said. The bugs are so bad. Two years. Snow don't kill them. This is just an example of what I put out maybe about three minutes in the yard. I mean, they cover the house, they come inside our house, through the windows, and we got weatherized windows. But these bugs come in here, in your kitchen, in the bathrooms, everywhere, through the whole house. Spray don't do no good. Didn't have a problem when that potato house was not there. So this has been just going on the second year and they knew the first year. City told us that they couldn't do anything, that the building was in the county. But I'm on the side of the building that runs with the city and the county. These bugs are so far, they're going over to Sir Clinton, believe it. I've had complaints from there. So definitely, it's like the infestation, they multiply and still die. And like I said, this is just about like two to three minutes just been put out. Trash can, they're about killing, for real. It's bad that we have to live like this. It really is. Can't hardly cook your food. Don't even wanna eat in your house because they're constantly flying around. That's just how bad they really are. Now, I wouldn't be complaining if I didn't have a problem, but that's a problem. And it seem like it's a safety hazard too because you definitely got to watch everything you do now at the point. I can't cook in my house because there's just too many of those insects that's just flying around. So we are asked and we are desperately needed. We need help of what to be done. If the building has the potatoes move out of the city limits, county, wherever it's at, then so be it. But we need to live in peace. We pay city and county taxes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fason. And last is Jimmy Farland. I'm not sure. Fairclaw? Okay. I'll go with that.
I'm going along with what Mr. Glenn said. We both stay on Peterson Road and it's a problem. There's trash everywhere. I even catch people doing it. And they're coming from Tinnell Town Road, the majority of them. So not only is that a problem, but the ditches are not cleaned out properly. And the reason I say that is because I stay in the curve on Peterson Road, 1309 Peterson Road. And there's the hokes, they farm the land behind me, Fairclaw's farm the land in front of me. But the sand from the field beside me fills up the ditches. And then here I am with runoff coming into my yard. So I cut the ditch myself to get it to drink. That's, you know, they need a piece of tile or something. Somebody needs to come through and cut the ditches. I mean, I'll do it, but, you know, there again, I'm not, you know, I'm not getting paid for it, so. But as he said, we're tired of living in the dump. You know, if they can't carry it to somewhere close by, you know, that's a pointed landfill, whatever, well, we got a problem. We gotta address it somehow, some way. I don't know if you can put a camera up or what, but, you know, it's mostly on the Boykin Bridge side. With that being said, also, we've got people flying around those curves on Peterson Road. There's no sign stating this, you know, this is a 35 mile an hour curve, it's 20 mile an hour, whatever. There's no hazard signs or nothing. So here, about once a month, I'm picking up car parts off the side of the road right there at the house. You know, just wondering if somebody ain't got killed right there. All right. One more problem I want to address is 2229 West Main Street. We've had several incidents where cars have run that curve coming from like the college, coming down, like they wanna go to Walmart the back way, whatever. Anyway, they're busting the curve and they're jumping over to into my parents' yard. They've hit the tree. I've cut the trees down because of the damage that it done to the tree. They've hit the house. They've hit my dad's truck, totaled it. You know, when is it gonna stop? Is, do I have to lose a parent in order to get guardrails or something up? You know? I've had my mom's mailbox moved because it's, you know, it's a blind curve and I don't want her to get hit walking across there to check her mail. So I had that problem solved, but there's still nothing being done about people slowing down, coming around that curve at her place. So you will help me out.
Thanks, sir. We appreciate it. We'll pass this information on. Does anyone else have any comments at this time in the public comment section? Hearing none. Accept the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?